AM on December the fourth, 2018. We would like to call for order, the need for the city council for the city of Statesboro. If we will, we'll have our certification and pledge of allegiance. My counsel would be here. Good.
Good morning. How are you doing, please? The most kind and gracious seven in the cloud, we come to thee with humble hearts this morning in our season of Thanksgiving and celebration. And we gather this morning to do the business of our government in the city of Statesboro. We thank you for that guidance and mercy and all your blessings. Can we ask all these things in Jesus's name? Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll move down to agenda item three, which is public comments. We have Raymond Scott on the agenda.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Good approach to just. Thank you. Come here. I want some more than I do. For the record, I'm Raymond Scott, and I'm representing the Bullock Alcohol and Drug Council. Here I'm a board member, and I have three stated purposes concerning the marijuana decriminalization. Agenda is coming up this morning, and what I do is I'll make these three statements, and if there's any questions or concerns about our background and why we're making these recommendations to the council, just feel free to ask me some questions. But for the record, the first state question I have or purpose for being here this morning is number one, the expanded use of marijuana has demonstrated harms to the public health through increased drug-driven fatalities. We have some research that tells us that workplace accidents, developmental mental health disorders, public exposure, secondhand smoke, including addiction. The second item we have concerns about, research indicates that the human brain is not fully developed until around the age of 25. Any substance prior to use can stunt brain development, and this is the reason why we want to propose to the council this morning, setting or choosing an age limit. What we found out from research is that anyone that's involved with what we call active substance use or chemicals under the age of 25 is stumped their development. So what we're proposing for a first age, if there be some guidelines set for people that are 25 and under, and also the second age category for people that are 25 and older. The biggest thing we want to talk about today is that from our council, our research, and our education, we want to reject both, the criminalization and decriminalization of marijuana. And the reason why is we want to pursue a middle ground here if we can. And the research and scientific knowledge tells us that there's a great harm to marijuana use, and I'll just elaborate a little bit more about that. What we know about marijuana and the drug that's in it, the THC, the potency of it is completely different from the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, even the early 2000s. What we know about marijuana today, the, like I said, the addictive substance and the chemicals and the impact it has on the brain, especially for the young adult, has gone three or four folds. All right? In other words, the amount, the substance, and what they're using is having a great impact. We know there's cognitive impairment, we know that their judgment, their reasoning, their insights, matter of fact, we can scan brains now, look at 17-year-olds, and look at the damage that it's doing to their brains. You know, it's been documented, well documented, that marijuana is, we always knew it was a gateway drug, but what we're finding out now, in particular, in the states that have passed the marijuana laws, the cities that are decriminalizing, decriminalizing of marijuana, we're seeing that the impact it is having on our youth, all right, on our youth, is fourfold, fivefold, tenfold, all right? And what we're finding out here is that the substance is directly related to our opiate epidemic we're involved with today. You know, we're having young people that are dying from opiates, you know, opiate overdose, the heroin overdose, and we all see that, we all know that. But what we don't talk about is the gateway drugs that opened this up, and marijuana is a big part of that. So basically, what we want to do today is try to support a proposal that discourages marijuana use and try to identify ways that we can provide adequate help. We're not just here to tell you what to do, how to do it, but we want a comprehensive plan if we're going to make a decision, and definitely, definitely public health and public safety. We know it impacts just not the bottom line, but it impacts people's lives. So what we want to be able to do is give you some recommendations or some ideas about what do we do with this, what do we do with this? And more importantly, what's the impact on our community? Questions, guys?
I have one quick question, Mr. Scott. You mentioned you represent the VA, DAC.
Yes, sir.
Are you also one of the members of the new elected commissioners?
Uh, no, I'm not. I'm not.
And that question, sir, refers to the fact you said you hit the recommendation and make some guidelines. It sounds good. That's one of the reasons I brought the facts up, you know, maybe one issue of the fact that the youth, citizens of Statesboro need help, because unfortunately, jails are being filled up. Mothers and fathers, grandkids, have to spend their last earned money to get people out of jail. And the fact that it does affect everybody, especially those who are not fully mature, age 25 below. I realize that alcohol, keep alcohol, puts a great job of training those who have problems with alcohol, who are cuffed. I'm hoping to be more proactive. And what I mean by that is that in the event that someone is caught in possession of marijuana under age 25, maybe we can get together and train them. Unfortunately, that's not the time to train, but it's always good to say, train a youth when he's a child. Grown folks, it's hard to train. Have them, if you give them a little guidance and a little love, maybe it will take this in, gateway drug, and go further. I do not believe we should knock, of course, and you can turn knocking in the air and lock them up, it's not the answer. I appreciate you coming and expressing your concerns.
Well, if I could respond to it, Mr. Scott, basically, what you're saying is, is what we already know, that the sooner that you can intervene, now I'll use that word, intervene with youth or educate youth with the dangers of chemicals, I'll just say across the board, and part of that, being arrested at 17, 16, or 18, whatever those ages are, part of that is, is that we know there has to be some accountability. We know that in some homes and some socioeconomic situations where the education or either is diminished, or either doesn't exist, or maybe they just, for some reason, get per take of that. But just because we get someone arrested, sometimes that first arrest may be the opportunity to intervene, and what we do know from research, and I work on the treatment side, is sometimes people that use chemicals or abuse chemicals, sometimes trouble is their best friend. In other words, even sometimes for parents and communities, church leaders, whomever they may be, law enforcement officers, sometimes that's the first interaction they have with a responsible adult, a responsible individual, to get the education that they need in order to not repeat that. You know, and I understand sometimes resources with, whether it be police officer, whether it be probation officer, whether it be, find all of those things, all right? But what I'm saying to you is, the risk that we're taking, all right, and encouraging, and maybe not directly, but indirectly, encouraging you to say, okay, all right, I know if I get stopped with a possession of marijuana, I'm going to pay X amount of dollars, and that's it. I believe from a public health safety, that's irresponsible.
Thanks for your comments. All right, everybody else?
Thank you for your recommendations. You can.
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Joshua Littrell.
Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, members of council. I'm going to pass out some information too. Been a little live feed on Facebook as well. Fairly adjusted, I'm going to switch that around. Beautiful. Okay, so I'm Joshua Littrell, the veterans for Canvas, and I'm here on behalf of seven veterans that contacted me and asked me to be here, because first and foremost, they don't want to be seen in public, and that's absolutely atrocious this day and time. I'm also here to dispel some of the myths that you just heard, that are categorically false. Canvas is absolutely non-addictive. I see more addictive things on the desk up there in the coffee. In fact, coffee is more addictive than cannabis when you talk about the physical addiction that comes along with it. Now granted, there are some mental addictions that come along with cannabis, that that's all mental addictions that come along with anything, whether you're mentally addicted to football, or, you know, whatever it is. So that's categorically false, and I'm glad that I was able to hear that this morning so I could address that issue as well. Some of the issues that I'd also like to address are the car accident statistics. So yes, those are going up in the states that have a cannabis program and that have access to it, but they also didn't track that information before they actually legalized cannabis. So yes, they went up because they never tracked them before. So that's a really, really ambiguous number that people talk about a lot of times. And when you talk about the youth, you look at the children that are leading the way with the medical cannabis here in Georgia, and that's Haley's Hope, that's the children who are benefiting from the seizure reduction. I've seen children go from 300 seizures down to none within a month, two months' timeframe, being seizure-free. I've seen a completely catatonic child come to life and speak for the first time at nine years old. You know, that's absolutely amazing, and that's the benefits of cannabis. I've been in this industry for about five years now. I'm from Reagan County of the northeast Georgia. My wife and I are actually stationed at Warner Robins, and we just got moved here from Eglin Air Force Base. I spent six years in the Air Force, so combat veteran. Want to say, Councilman Duke, I appreciate your service. Councilman Jones, thank you for your service as well. If I missed anybody else up there that served, I apologize. But I want to see, you know, really, big changes come here in our state, and we have to lead at the local level. That's where we can have the most impact, and the quickest impact as well, because nobody's life should be ruined because they get caught with less than an ounce of cannabis and they go to jail, because you're talking about losing a job, you can talk about possibly getting kicked out of school, you're talking about life-changing, life-altering things because they get caught with a little bit of possession of cannabis. And that's absolutely ridiculous. So when we talk about the gateway drug, wow, that's another myth that's absolutely been dispelled. In fact, I consider, and many other considers, experts in the field, in the medical field. I spend my time at Harvard University during conferences for medical cannabis every year, and it's absolutely clear there that medical cannabis works, and it's beneficial, and it's a reduction in overdose deaths, a 25% reduction in overdose deaths. That's real lives. Those are real people. Those are real veterans. Those are real civilians in your community that we're talking about, saving their lives because they've got access to cannabis. Now, in Georgia, we have this awesome medical cannabis program, right? We've been working on it for five years. I've been right up there. I actually spoke at the Capitol two weeks ago in Georgia, in Atlanta, and, you know, we're hoping to be one of the ones who gets a license to cultivate and dispense medical cannabis in the state. We have medical cannabis in Georgia, but there's no access. How hilarious is it that the legislature passed medical cannabis but didn't do anything about getting access to it? What they say is, come on in, get your medical cannabis card, get registered, but you've got to break the federal law to go get your medicine. That's ridiculous, when it's available right here in the state. So these people that are using cannabis in your community, I would, I would absolutely be really clear on something. Nobody's ever overdosed and died from cannabis, and nobody ever will. Alcohol and pills kill every single day. The number-one murderer in the United States is the pharmaceutical industry, and that is a fact. They kill more veterans every single day than wars. More veterans die from accidental overdose than civilians. We're at a 50% higher rate of accidental overdose than civilians, because the VA just throws medzaps, and they've been doing it for decades to me. Now, served overseas in Operation Iraqi Freedom, I come home thinking that, hey, I can fight and I can get access, and the members of the legislature will stand up for us and our benefits, and stand up for us and advocate for us, and in fact, it's not the case. In Georgia, we are at 83% support for in-state cultivation of medical cannabis, where we can't get it done through the legislature. What is wrong with that? That's why I applaud you all for at least tabling this and hopefully passing this today, because really, the benefit starts at the local level, where we can impact the most amount of people. Our prisons are overrun, our cannabis laws are absolutely draconian, and it's ridiculous now that people are going to jail for a plant, for a lifesaving plant, for a plant that can get them off of opioids, because it's an exit drug, not a gateway drug, but an exit drug. These are clear indications and clear analysis behind it, too. There are tons of studies that have come up and support everything that I'm saying, and dispel all the myths that you've heard over and over again. I urge you all to get in contact with us, to edu, we've got tons, I've probably got 40 studies on our website that's in the material I spoke to you about. Israel leads the world in cannabis research, and one quick thing on that, Israel has CBD, which is actually a product that we have that's available in all 50 states. It's a legal product, industrial hemp product, and we have a product that's helping veterans bridge the gap and reduce their opioid dependency. But Israel has CBD in their med packs because they see a 30% reduction in recovery time after a TBI. So after they get hit with an IED and a bomb goes up, boom, they have a 30% reduction in recovery time because of CBD. That is fact. Cannabis saves lives. It should not ruin a young child's life, it should not ruin my veterans' lives that have advocated for me to come down here and speak to you all day because they can't be up in public, because their job doesn't allow, as soon as their job sees it, boom, they're out. But you know what? They're not in a jerk testing position. So as long as they don't use it by their own job, they can use it at their home, and they should be allowed to do that. We should be allowed to utilize this plant. It is a lifesaving plant. I want to open up the floor for questions, and I'm a wealth of knowledge, and I'm happy to help out in any way I can, because really, the key is to pass this, to get cannabis access and decriminalization for that less than one ounce, because nobody's life should be ruined and go to jail and lose their job, lose their life, lose their career over a less than an ounce of cannabis.
Counsel, any questions? Another question is pointing out the fact that you, that you came over and shared some facts with us, although it's important to make decisions based on facts and not the myths. Thank you, Mr. Joshua.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this particular topic?
Good morning. And I don't want to take up too much more of your time on this topic, and we've heard a lot, but I'm Dr. Chad Posick, I'm a criminal justice professor at Georgia State University. I just think we have to be very careful about language. This is not legalization, and this is not even decriminalization, it's certainly not commercial. We've heard the term expanded use, I don't think anyone's advocating for expanding the use of drugs, just taking incarceration off the table. And we know that incarceration itself has traumatic impact on child's lives, as well as trauma on the brain. So we're talking about a lot of the substance use and how that impacts the brain. We know that incarceration has very similar impacts. Also, we know that, as we already mentioned, we have a problem with filling our jails, as well as prisons, and in Georgia, private probation is very, very overstapped. So I just wanted to echo a lot of the facts already, that there is no consistent evidence. I've poured over this empirical literature, there is no consistent evidence for increased drug use after taking off incarceration off the table. There is no consistent evidence that marijuana is a gateway drug, as you've heard. So I just want to be clear, and as the councilman said, making sure that we use science, facts, empirical evidence to guide this, and let that guide us in terms of getting the best policy. And as the gentleman said, this can ruin people's lives, arrests has stigma attached to that, so I just want to make sure that going forward, we're using the correct terms and really thinking about this holistically, and I think that both individuals that came up here and spoke before, I just wanted to echo some of those facts and figures that we just heard as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else? All right, Chief.
Morning, Councilman. Mayor, thank you very much. So I want you to know first off that I'm very much in support of criminal justice reform around the drug issue, but I believe it needs to come on the sentencing end. I think that we need to find better ways to address the drug issue from the user's side, through counseling and rehabilitation and those kinds of things, but that's after adjudication. I came here several weeks ago, a few months ago, and spoke to you about this issue, and I advocated at that time for more a policy of sight and release than a true decriminalization. I believe that the police officer on the scene is the one who has the context of how the marijuana was found, right? If they find a guy with, you know, he's smoking a blunt, and he's on his back porch, and he's not hurting anybody, that needs to be taken within context. Sometimes in a police report, or by time he gets to court, you know, it's been sort of boiled down into something else. When we have somebody transporting, you know, three-quarters of an ounce of marijuana someplace, the officer's the one who understands the context of that. They understand all of the circumstances surrounding that. So I brought some show and tell today, just so we're all on the same page with what we're talking about. I can pass this around, but I don't want to let it leave my sight, so if you could just get it up on top of the table, it'd be great. So this is a marijuana from a case, from one single case, that's already been disposed of, right? This marijuana is waiting to be destroyed, so it's no longer evidence, it's just simply waiting to be destroyed. This first one I'll pass, this is an ounce of marijuana, okay? So it's just a vegetable.
Chief, could you show the cameras that are either up? Show the camera as well.
Now, I don't have the cell, because I was going to take a picture of that. So the second one I'm going to pass, this is three grams of marijuana, individually packaged inside this cup, you're going to have to kind of shake it and take a look at it, but each of those is about a pinch of marijuana, more or less, and that's a gram.
That's an ounce of marijuana, Chief, in that pack. Let everyone see that one more time. That's an ounce of what we're talking about.
That's right.
You say that this is Peggy's for resale?
This is how we buy it. When we have undercover officers buying marijuana, that's what they're typically buying, is one or two of those at a time. That's going for about $10 right now in Statesboro. Each of those grams, it's 28, a little over 28 grams of marijuana in an ounce.
Why is that not as big as the other? I don't know anything about that.
So this is, each of these individually is one gram. This is an ounce together, 28 of these individual packages would make it one of these. So I just wanted to say that, you know, you guys, legislative branch, we're here to support you. Executive branch will do its job. I'm much more in favor of you allowing the officers to have a discretion to cite and release or jail based upon all of the impending circumstances and the context of how the marijuana was found.
We'll move down to agenda item four. This is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. The amendments include 11-20-2018 council amendments and then 11-20-2018 executive section amendments. Is there a motion to approve? So, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a second reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2018 dash 13 for ordinance amending chapter six, alcohol, alcoholic beverages to allow Sunday sale of alcohol to begin at 11:00 a.m. Is there a motion to approve?
Soon.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We move down to agenda item six, which is a second reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2018 dash 14 for ordinance to amend chapter 58, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of the City of Statesboro, Georgia, to provide penalties for possession of marijuana, to repeal all offenses and conflict here with and for other purposes. Okay.
Mayor, council, this is a new, new ordinance section that goes into title 58 of our municipal Code of Ordinance. This top 58 is crimes and offenses. This is clearly not a decriminalization, because it's actually created a municipal ordinance crime, whereas before, it was simple reliance on state statute when it came to possession of less than an ounce of marijuana, which is, which is only exception to the Georgia Controlled Substances Act. That is a misdemeanor instead of a felony. What's before y'all today is that new section where the possession of marijuana has a municipal ordinance, becomes a municipal crime instead of just a state crime. And in this one, it would be, there would be no jail time, but there would be, there would be a fine of up to $500. And on the ordinance court, we, you know, clearly states that, you know, this is not the intent of council to legalize or otherwise decriminalize the possession of marijuana within the corporate limits of the city. And I just want to make sure that that, that is out there. This is not a decriminalization, rather, this is the creation of a crime and offense. Nothing under 58, under title 58, is saying you can do something, it's saying that these are crimes and offenses against the city of Statesboro. This is very similar, this is extremely similar to Savannah, and it's also very similar to other, to other side related municipal violations across the state, such as parks and the city of Atlanta itself. And that, so this is before y'all today, a second reading, just, just put a new, a new crime and offense section in there, which would be marijuana, and this would apply to an ounce or less within the city limits.
And I know that we had some discussion around the verbal resolution. Chief, I want you to take, take a listen to the verbal resolution and give me your feedback on this. Verbal resolution to be attached with this would be for offenses consistent with city ordinance 58 dash 28, Statesboro Police Department officers will cite exclusively under local ordinance beginning on January 1, 2019, if the officer is satisfied with the defendant's proof of identity. No arrestable crime charges arises from the same incident. The officer reasonably believes the defendant will show up to municipal court, and the defendant has no active warrants. Does that verbiage sound agreeable?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think what we're doing with this is limiting the officer's discretion. And again, I'd just like to reiterate, I think that the officer's in the best position to make a decision based upon all the circumstances and the law. And, you know, under a sight and release policy, that kind of direction to say that we would like to see these prosecuted in municipal court certainly gives direction without limiting the officer's discretion. I'm afraid that that kind of direction severely limits an officer's discretion.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Any discussions by council? Councilman Duke?
Mr. Mayor, I want to, council, I mean, Attorney Kane and I have spoken at length about this issue. He tried to emphasize several points about this is not decriminalization, this is not legalization, but also wanted everyone to think for a minute. I've raised children, all, hopefully, you've had the experience of that, or someone close to you. This is a new session move, in a way, and I wanted to call back on Kane to tell you about the court appearance, because this may be the first time that a young person who's here for a degree and not a criminal record in Statesboro, Georgia, has a chance to appear in a very formal court setting where he's probably scared to death, because this judge in a black robe, there's nobody to tolerate any foolishness. Kane, talk about the court experience, what they can expect in terms of how they would appear. With this citation, they would go to the court, expect what? A fine?
What would happen if here is that, you know, this would be a mandatory appearance, so this would, this would not be something like a speeding ticket where you could pay your bond forfeiture upfront, it would essentially go as guilty. It's not really guilty, it's a close enough one. That's not an option under here, this is a, this would be a mandatory court appearance. And furthermore, how it And furthermore, how it works, I mean, as the court is a part of the court, it would give us a list of offenses that each person had in the past. And we would take that into account on, in what sort of conditions were on there. If this was someone's second offense under this ordinance, then there's an extremely good likelihood of an alcohol drug assessment being one of the terms of, of, you know, disposing of this matter. And furthermore, we would, there would also be the discretion of a solicitor or judge to request that the sighting officer change the charging document so that, you know, if it's someone's third offense in a year, we obviously have, someone's taking, someone's taking advantage of the system at that point. So at that, at that time, you know, for a few of them, or after a couple of them, which it might be something to think about that, you know, giving the officer of our, you know, recommendation to change the charging document under the control process is, which would require voting, as our board and sheriff's office at that point. And if they're threatening it all, there's one other.
Thank you. I just wanted everyone to understand, getting a ticket like this and that mandatory court appearance probably would well notice and maybe even apparent superiority is about as close to an intercession beginning as you can have for our young people and offenders. So again, trying to, if you will, give someone a second chance. This is the beginning of that, but also a chance to behavior modification. Thank you, Kane.
All right, is there any other further discussion with council? Like you said, that there is none, is there a motion to approve? I have a motion that ordinance number two oh eighteen, verse fourteen, and six be approved. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We move on to Agenda Item Seven. This is the second reading consideration of a motion to approve ordinance twenty eight dash fifteen, or ordinance of traffic control administration with new subsection regarding presentation of council meetings, Agenda Item to advise this for the code of ordinances. Okay.
Mayor and council, this was brought before y'all on the November twentieth meeting, and this is just the, this is the way that we can move forward. So we have a clear cut path on how ordinances, how ordinance revisions get to mayor and council for consideration and approval. Then over this, on the twentieth, one thing, one, one part of this, of this proposed ordinance was somehow missed off the first reading. And I just want, since that wasn't our only, very clear that we, we review that. And that is subsection F under it, and that is upon recommendation of city staff, unanimous vote of quorum of mayor and council, the formalities contained herein may be waived. When I look at this, I know that sometimes we have almost emergency type situations where something needs to change now. And the way it's written is there are, you know, with this process, there is, there is, there is a fairly substantial amount of time voted to revising any of our ordinances. So like I said, that subsection F is just upon recommendation, unanimous vote of quorum when it's presented. Those formalities contained in here shall be waived, or may be waived. But this was just, this is just that, the process of how, how the city attorney is notified on when to start working on an ordinance and that nobody's blindsided just by seeing a agenda saying, I've never seen this before, you know? So this is just a way, this is just a way of putting this more out there and putting a very, just putting together standard process for creation of ordinance revisions and additions.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Well, it's going to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we move down to Agenda Item Eight. This is a public hearing consideration of a motion to approve alcohol application, for alcohol license. Five point store number two, Lindsey Martin, twenty eight fifty-five North Side Drive. Is there a motion to approve the public hearing?
Remove.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, plan in zone, are there any issues?
Ah, no issues.
Fire inspection?
No issues.
Chief Broadhead?
No, no issues.
Kane?
No issues.
All right, is there anyone here to speak for the request? All right, is there anyone here to speak against the request? All right, is there a motion to close the hearing? All right, any council discussion?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, is there any council discussion? All right, is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we move down to Agenda Item Nine, which is consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-two, a resolution authorizing the opening of a separate bank account for the twenty eighteen T-Squad bank account. Senator.
Good morning, City Vice Finance Director. Before you, there's a resolution to open a bank account for the two thousand eighteen T-Squad funds. For the two thousand eighteen T-Squad's in government agreement, the city is required to set up a separate bank account for the T-Squad funds. Two thousand eighteen T-Squad proceeds shall not be commingled with other funds of the municipality and shall be used exclusively for the transportation purposes detailed in the agreement. Therefore, there's a reason for the T-Squad to set up this bank account.
Thank you, Senator. All right, is there a motion to approve? Remove. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Senator. All right, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-three, a resolution to adopt the First Amendment of the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget for each fund of the city of Statesboro, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures and expenses, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations and prohibited expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding appropriate. Senator.
Yes, sir. The resolution before you is to adopt the First Amendment to the five two thousand nineteen budget. In the general fund, the transfer to the CIP fund of five hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars for the purchase of the vehicles, the police vehicles and conversions and locking system. These items were approved for purchase at previous meetings. This amendment formally moves the money from the general fund to the CIP fund, decreasing the fund balance by five thousand, five hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars. The other item in the budget amendment is the creation of the two thousand eighteen T-Squad fund for revenues and expenditures. These revenues and expenditures are based on the projects presented to the council at October thirtieth public meeting. And the creation of the fund is part of the requirements in the two thousand eighteen T-Squad government operating.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Remove. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-four, a resolution to adopt the Second Amendment to the six-year capital approvals program for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four of the city's schedule. Senator.
Before you, there's a resolution to adopt the Second Amendment to the six-year capital approvals program for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Included in the amendment are the two thousand eighteen T-Squad projects as presented to council on October the thirtieth, as well as the police department vehicles and conversions. The six-year CIP amendment totals twenty-one million eighty-six thousand to be spent over the six years, with two thousand, two million forty-six thousand in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. One point five million of that is T-Squad projects, the other five hundred forty-five thousand is the police vehicles and conversions.
And then, and then just, just to make sure, this, this can be amended at any time?
Yes, this will be updated through the budget process. This is the six-year capital program.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Soon.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Line at twelve, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-five, a resolution to adopt the First Amendment to the city of Statesboro's scheduled fees, rates, and fines for fiscal year twenty nineteen.
Yes, sir. The one thing I do want to point out, that there is a correction on attachment number one. Instead of it being page four, it actually is page five. And that is the, to charge for the third printing of occupational tax certificates and the alcohol license. We're having many reprints according to the city, the city clerk. The first one is free, the second one is free, but by the time they lose the third one and need it, lose the second one and need to come in and print a third one, we felt like we should charge them. And also, it shows, it is on page five that the scheduled rates and fees is an increase of the extra duty pay begin in January first, two thousand nineteen, will go from thirty dollars an hour for a three-hour minimum to forty-eight hours, three-hour minimum, and a six-hour, three-hour minimum cost recovery fee for a total of fifty-four dollars an hour. The cost recovery fee would help the city recoup the cost of FICA, workers' comp, retirement levels.
Is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Senator. All right, moving down to Agenda Item Thirteen. Chief Broadhead, consideration of a motion to award a contract to Patrol PC for purchase of Wannatah, work at mobile laptops and related equipment in place of patrol vehicles, amount of fifty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. If approved, this purchase will be funded on the CIP PD dash one from the allocated funds provided by the lease at one year old means, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I did bring my show and tell, I'm not going to pull that out again, I just signed for this, not one of the others. This is the, the third time I've come to speak to you about these cars getting effectively outfitted. The computers were pulled out separately because we wanted a sole source provider, and so we couldn't lump that into the last, the purchase of the cage and the lights and all of that. And I want to talk to you briefly about this because these computers are very expensive. Typically, we've been buying a computer for about eighteen hundred dollars per car. That's the base unit price. It doesn't include the mount, the software, all the drivers that make that, that run. Those are costing about eighteen hundred dollars. We're having a ton of problems with those. These are our standard laptop computers that we've adapted to car use, but the heat inside those cars, you know, gets crazy and the, the screens are falling off and we're having all kinds of connectivity issues. It's hard word to say. And so we tested in the spring, a computer from Patrol PC, they make a specific computer built for cars, a number of agencies around the nation. They're going to these, I think the New Jersey State Police building about eleven hundred of these computers. But they're about thirty-six hundred dollars a piece as their base price. The advantage for us, though, is that, that they're guaranteeing this product over seven years. Currently, we're buying two eighteen hundred dollar computers in that time because the replacement's about every three years for those computers. And so I just want to be very open with you about the initial sticker shock can, can be high to buy a thirty-six hundred dollar base computer, but we do think we're going to get more bang for our buck. The other issue is that with our current laptop computers in cars, we have to buy a separate modem, which is a few hundred dollars. These have the modem built in, they actually use an AirCard. The one that we tested has had no connection issues with the network where other ones are constantly logging officers off and they have to log back in. So we just think this is a really good purchase and a much better use of our funds than what we've been doing. So I just want to be open to you about that.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Soon.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Move down to Agenda Item Fourteen, which is consideration of a motion to approve vacation buyback from employees exceeding the maximum allowable accumulation.
Senator Vice Finance Director. Before you, there's a consideration to allow pay-in lieu of vacation, the number of hours it takes to reach maximum allowable hours, up to forty hours for employees who have not been, have not taken, have not taken their vacation, who are over the max. Due to various unforeseen, unforeseen circumstances among city departments, such as short staffing, it is recommended to allow employees in excess of two hundred forty hours and three hundred thirty-six hours for fire shift employees to be paid in lieu of these hours over the maximum. Employees may only be paid the number of hours it takes to reach the allowable maximum for their position up to forty hours. The impact on the budget will be no more than fifty-five thousand dollars.
All right, and so, so you let them pay the due fees up?
No more than fifty-five thousand dollars across all the funds. We do have employees scheduled to take vacation for the rest of the year, so we do expect that number to come down between now and December thirty-first.
All right, and I know we stopped doing this in two thousand and ten.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was the thought process during that time period? Do you know?
In two thousand and ten, it was budget constraints.
It was budget constraints, okay. All right, and so now because of the number of people that we have, that's not, one position is open, and two, now we're back into this position again, correct?
For this year, we are making the recommendation.
All right, and so as of right now, today we have seventy-one people that this is affecting?
Yes, sir, and the majority of those employees have been here over ten years. So they're earning three or more, three or more weeks of vacation a year.
And I might just add that, that this isn't planned to be an annual event. It's, it's if, if we have, if we continue to have as many positions open, and if people really can't schedule that time off like they want, then that might come up again, I think in twenty nineteen. But we hope that doesn't happen. And in the past years, we haven't had that many openings, openings, and we have encouraged and to have people use the time off because we think the time off is, is just as important for them as to get that time away from the job. And so that will continue to be our, our main push is, for department heads to make sure that people get the time off. And this may not come up again next year or the year after that, or another year.
That's our, our answer. And we currently have forty-four positions that's open.
We had, earlier in the year, we had somewhere between forty-four and forty-five. I think right now, we might be down to twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Has, has been working to, to get those filled. We're hoping next year we get that down to, back down to ten, twelve, fourteen. There's always going to be, this is kind of keep that, that number down this year.
All right, and how does, as far as the department is, what is their role as far as making sure that staff take any needed vacation?
They, they do their best to make sure that, that people do get their vacations, but we also want to continue to provide the service. And so there's that kind of balance of, of trying to do that. And in various, in department to department, if you're like HR where you have like three or four people and if you have one person who was missing for extended period of time, it's like being down a third. In a larger department, you can be down two or three, and that percent is still less, so it, so it kind of varies. And so everybody does their best to make sure that they do get that time off, the best they can. This year, we just had, we just had more than we have had in a long time.
Randy, I just wanted to ask you, as my attorney, buying back, can we put this as a non-perishable vacation blank? I mean, people do have extended illnesses where this could be used when they run out of sick.
You got the wrong guy.
Yes, according to our, we do not have the option available according to our personnel policy at this time, and we do have to record those liability on books.
Say that again, please. I'm here for doing difficult to hear you.
We currently do not have that option in our policy, our personnel policy, to do something like that. And that is also, vacation is also a liability that we would have to record on our books at year end and pay that vacation out if someone leaves.
Well, would that be the same as buying it back, though?
With some of the employees, that they have over the forty hours, they're going to go back down to the maximum so that they'll actually lose the, anything over forty, over two hundred and eighty hours if they're in the regular two hundred forty-hour employee.
Okay, but that is just a policy and we can change policies, is that correct?
We would probably, we would need to adopt the policy. We would revise that policy, yes, sir.
Now, Cindy, let me be clear to the question. It changes our financial outlook. It can change the policy as well.
Yes.
Your increasing liabilities is what you just stated, correct?
Yes.
But at the same time, if you buy it back, you're just moving the issue to current cash out, is that, I mean, it's really moving it either from that column or this column, or pay, or buying it back, right?
Right now, we have the funds, but due to the fact that we have had the openings among all the departments, so it's not going to be that really big of impact on the budget because each department, there's eighteen departments that are going to be affected by this, and pretty much all those departments have had an opening of some sort. So where you have already had the money budgeted, you, you have that, so you can pay it out. If we book it as a liability, that number's not budgeted. So come the year end, when we're having to show it on our books, you're showing an increased liability.
So the liability, let's just say, worst case scenario, in a downturn, the liability increases by pushing it to another fiscal.
Correct. I don't remember exactly what year, but it wasn't until after two thousand, I believe, that we even had a policy capping vacation. You'll have some employees who had just kept building and building, and when they retired, they had several thousand dollars worth of vacation.
And then they earned it at, at a different amount in the, in the beginning. So if they were a long-term employee, you might, you might earn it at six dollars an hour. If you're here a long time, you might vacation out at sixteen dollars an hour, so there's a ten-dollar an hour difference. So those are, those are things that, what we've, what we've done in the past, when we, when we didn't have this, this many people is department heads would have one person or two people who were in a period of time, and then we would, we would allow them to carry over some of that. time, and then we would, we would allow them to carry over some of that time so they could use it, that would be within the first quarter of the year, so we could get that used, otherwise, it just carries on, and that number just continues to get larger and larger. If you don't at some time make that decision to, to either, like this year, it's a decision just to, you know, buy it back, or people are just going to lose a lot of time, and a lot of people that are on that list have done some extra work this year to make sure services continue, so that's what we brought up. It's up to you guys to decide.
I, I personally have no problem doing it, as long as there's a clear understanding that the president's were saying, and that's clear, um, over the way that we're working.
Cindy, uh, do we have any employees this year or last year that went over sick leave and used all their sick leave and didn't get paid?
Uh, probably not, because with the policy is the, you would use all of your sick time and then vacation, right, Claudia? So they would have used any vaca, they would not have not got paid, they would have gotten paid all their vacation out, and then they would have started using any vacation, sorry, sick and then vacation.
I'm still trying to understand the reason you said that not allowing them to just accumulate vacations or, and I've got the increased hourly rate might apply, but I don't understand your, uh, your fear or your concern about a liability.
When the.
It's kind of like the bookkeeping issue.
Well, also, when, when a person leaves, they get paid their vacation, vacation time.
Sure.
So if they're at the two four, it's two hundred forty hours, they get paid two hundred forty hours, if they're at more than that, then they get the higher rate as well, so if they have two hundred eighty, then they get two hundred eighty hours paid out, and so that number increases. What this will do is basically reset everybody at January first to the maximum allowable hours, and then allow, um, for employees to schedule the time throughout the year to be able to take that time.
That was, that was, that was, Councilman Doogie, by having that in the personnel policy, it removes an incentive to, you know, under-report your, um, holiday time, so you can accumulate it. So, I mean, not accusing anyone of anything back in the day, but there was certainly, uh, it was not being, holiday times were not always being utilized properly. So it, by putting that in the personnel policy, you eliminate that incentive to under-report, as a matter of fact, it gives you an incentive to use your vacation days and get the heck on out of here and go take a break.
Yeah, and I think that needs to be the priority, the priority needs to be that we really encourage our employees, and that's an individual employee situation, each employee need to be saying, hey, look, I need to take this vacation time, each manager needs to be making sure that they're taking this time. Um, I mean, to me, that just reeks of other things, um, but, I mean, at this point, now we all where we are. Um, so is there a motion to approve?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, thank you, Senator. All right, is there any other business, uh, for city council?
Um, over in my neck of the woods, we have a large problem with the Lime Bikes, probably a lot of people are here knowing, they know what they are. They're hard. Anyway, I, I, they actually have, I have to have, I'm a rival, but anyway, if people are getting badly.
Might say I do.
That's right.
How to make sure you have more coverage.
Um, they actually have a phone number you can call, you can call somebody, or call somebody with their national office and, uh, anyway, uh, from BD, if somebody comes up with some bigger force, I'm going to have somebody come in, in a couple meetings, uh, and we can talk about the safety, not only the safety, some guy broke one into my neighborhood, trying to steal from my neighbor's shed in the backyard on a Sunday afternoon, three o'clock in the afternoon, and started riding off on a scooter. Um, anyways, there's safety, there's crime, anyway, uh, it needs to be made there somehow, we, we need to look at it somehow, I, I don't know what to do, but asking everybody's.
I think, I think there are other municipalities that do have current ordinances that perhaps we could look at. We're, we're actually on a, on a committee with, uh, GMA, with, with other cities that are having the same problem, and, and so they have a, they have a work group together, trying to figure out how we take care of that problem, kind of across the state, so we can be kind of consistent everywhere, so, so they're working on that.
We'll take that out and let.
Well, I would say, what, uh, Reed's saying, I've seen numerous ditched Lime Bikes, scooters, whatever they are, as well as burning at high speeds, surprisingly high speeds, in some very precarious spots, and, um, it's something else after we got for it. But, uh, anyway, I do have the same concern, yes, sir, take your number one.
All right, city manager comments?
Uh, Frank has one.
Actually, I've got two, I just remembered our second. Um, the first one is, um, I just want to recognize David McClendon, he served on a planning commission, and his term is coming to an end, and I want to make sure to send an invite to you guys, if you have somebody that would be interested in serving on a planning commission, his last term is this December meeting, so please forward me any possible candidates within the next, uh, two weeks, about twenty-first, December twenty-first, please, if anybody that would be interested, if they've been doing a good job of serving, McClendon did an outstanding job for us, and I think you can go. Um, and second, the item, um, just want to make a public announcement from the KSBB, uh, they're, uh, going to do this year in cooperation with the county, bring one out for the chipper, and of course, that program is an effort to keep the, uh, Christmas trees out of the landfill, and it will be held on Saturday, January the fifth, and it's going to be, uh, at the general store in State Road from nine AM to one PM, so please. Anderson's General, for, for, any of you that are up in the wood, Anderson's General Store, and they've been doing that for years, yeah.
Please bring the tree.
No artificial trees, no pine.
Are there any public comments? All right, seeing that there is none, um, we have consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation in accordance to OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three.
Uh, if you may, do we have a speaker? I want to speak on food trucks.
I know.
No, that person's not here.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right. No problem. All right, is there a motion?
Remove.
All right, take a second. All right, all of them favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, we will, we will, we'll, we'll, Cindy, Cindy, come back.